I didn't mean to. Yeah. On the friendship. I guess, I guess I need to get started.
So you want my mentor to get turned off like you? Because you're irresponsible. Whatever. I don't need to. Josh?
Hey. You missed an earlier call too.
Are we ready for Mr. Jerry? Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the public hearing portion of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. We would like to start tonight with a presentation. Who has the proclamation? Okay.
Rex Lynch. Rex Lynch, ladies and gentlemen.
We'd like to recognize.
Rex Lynch.
We're here to recognize Judge Tim Elrod. I'd like for him to come forward. And one last time, I'd like to say, all rise for the Honorable Tim Elrod.
Thank you.
Y'all be seated. I love doing that for him. He always actually. No, we just want to take a minute to recognize and thank Judge Elrod for what he's done last year for filling in. Brian Hunt, Judge Brian Hunt had to take a leave of absence for serve our country. And Judge Elrod stepped right in and kept our courts rolling. He's very familiar with the courts and just to be honest, couldn't have run any smoother. And we truly appreciate the work he did. So if it's all right, I'd like to read our resolution honoring Judge Timothy G. Elrod. Whereas in June of 2023, Anderson County Juvenile Court Judge Brian Hunt announced that he had been deployed to Africa in support of Operation Enduring Freedom as part of his official duties with the U.S. Army Judge Advocate General's JAG Corps. And whereas lifelong resident and well-known attorney, Tim Elrod volunteered to fill the vacancy on the juvenile court bench and was subsequently appointed by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners on July 17th, 2023. And whereas with Judge Elrod's compassion for children, legal acumen, and nearly two decades of juvenile court experience, the decision to appoint Judge Elrod has proven to be an excellent choice and seamless transition, including countless compliments from court staff and parents. And whereas his relentless work ethic allowed him to carefully balance a fully loaded juvenile court docket with his duties as founding member and managing partner of the highly successful and regionally recognized law firm of OEB Law, PLLC. And whereas Judge Elrod is a true philanthropist, always supporting his community by generous donation to charities, schools, and his unwavering support of high school athletics and Anderson County Foster Care Christmas party. And whereas he is truly dedicated family man, spending any free time with his cherished wife, Elisa, adult daughter Savannah and Shelby, and his 10-year-old son Sawyer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session this 20th day of May, 2024, that we honor this great man who selflessly stepped up and helped his home community in a time of need. The Board of Commissioners will be forever grateful and sincerely appreciative of Judge Elrod for his devotion to Anderson County, its citizens, and endless compassion for the children of this great county. Be it further resolved that we declare May 25th, 2024, as Judge Timothy Grant Elrod Day in Anderson County in tribute to his dedication, commitment, and loyalty to Anderson County. Resolved duly passed and effective this 20th day of May, 2024. Judge? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. You know, it was my honor to serve and I'm humbled by the Commissions and our county's citizenry in asking me to do this. I couldn't have done it without the good Lord up above first and foremost. And then secondly, my wife and my family. I'm very honored tonight that my mother's here and that warms my heart. Thank you, Mama. At heart, I'm an Anderson County boy, born and raised. And I know as well as all of you know that our children are our future. And without our children, you know, we won't have a great county. So during my time on the bench, I worked very diligently and hard to keep what Judge Hunt had going, going, and then sought out some new ways to try to make a difference. That mission is not complete. That mission falls to the Commission, to our community, to continue to support our children and their families. We don't like to see children in juvenile court, but when they do come in, these kids and our parents now know that our court cares and that our Commission also cares. So keep those things in mind as you go forward. Hug and love your kids because not a lot of people can do that. So continue to support your community. And if you ever feel a need to give back to the community, you can ask any one of these distinguished people up here how you can do that and they'll find something for you to do, I promise. So thank you very much. I'm very, very, very humbled and honored.
Thank you, Judge Elrod. Every year, the Anderson County Board of Commissioners present a scholarship to graduating seniors at Anderson County, Clinton, and Oak Ridge. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Wells to do the presentation of the Oak Ridge Scholarship.
That's part of the cost of receiving a scholarship is you've got to face your fear of getting in front of large crowds. So Ms. Dakota Farrell is the recipient of this year's scholarship. And as it reads, be it resolved this 20th day of May, 2024, the Anderson County Board of Commissioners hereby awards the 28th Annual County Commission Scholarship in the amount of $500 to Ms. Dakota Farrell. She is a senior representing Oak Ridge High School. And this was signed by our Commission Chairman, Mr. Tyler Mays. So Dakota, I will say, has told us she's going to be going to Maryville College and studying in business. I think that's amazing. You're going to do great things on behalf of Oak Ridge. Did you want to say anything?
I don't have too much to say, but thank you very much. I am very much appreciative.
Excellent. Thank you.
Josh Anderson and myself were honored to be able to present the scholarship at Anderson County High School earlier this month. And Denise Palmer and Michael Foster, sorry, presented the Clinton recipient. Now we'll move on to the public hearing for the amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include rezoning of property at 1534 Mountain Road, Andersonville, from A2 rural residential to R1 suburban residential district. I think we'll start with.
Should I sit back down?
No, it's not. Go ahead.
I was really hoping more people were going to leave with them. I didn't know. My name is Stephen Clare and I'm here for Gregory Development there at 3712 Cunningham Road, Knoxville, 37918. I want to thank you all for your time this evening very much. And really, all I have to say is I respectfully ask that you approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission for the rezone of that property from A2 to R1 residential zone. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that wants to speak in support of the zoning?
Yes, my name's Harold Edwards. I reside at 156 Henderson Bend Road. And I serve on the Planning Commission. And I wanted to provide a little insight to the County Commission as to how this arrived to your plate. As you know, all rezonings come before the Planning Commission. I do think that the Planning Commission does their due diligence in reviewing and giving due consideration to each rezoning request. What the Planning Commission does, first of all, is review and ensure that the proposed rezoning is compatible with the current and surrounding land use. Secondly, we use our adopted land use plan, a policies plan, to guide us in those decisions. And then the third thing, we have a professional planner from the East Tennessee Development District, and we rely greatly upon their expertise and their input. With this particular case and with all rezonings, as I said, we do give due diligence. One thing I want to bring to the Planning Commission or to the County Commission's attention, this property probably is going to develop either way, whether it's rezoned or not. Currently, it's zoned rural residential. It can be developed as a mobile home park that has even higher density under the current zoning. It can be developed as duplexes. So I don't know how this proposed development is going to occur. In any event, any development that does occur on this property will come before the Planning Commission. The residents will have an opportunity to come to the Planning Commission and voice their opinion on any proposed development. But again, thank you. And I just wanted to share with you a little insight on how these rezonings come to County Commission. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Edwards, please.
Yes.
How, when was the last time that land use plan was updated?
The land use plan was, I think, 2020.
2020?
Yes.
Okay. Just for brevity, you know, would you explain what that is?
The land use plan is a policies plan that really uses an objective. And then policies, for example, in this case, higher density development should occur where the infrastructure is in place. By that, I'm talking about water, sewer, and roads. I do understand, and we all understand, that development puts an additional burden on local government to provide community facilities and infrastructure services. But in turn, it also provides additional increase in the tax base. And it also increases opportunities for commercial development, retail sales, which increases your sales tax revenue. So it's a balance between growth and making sure it's planned growth. And that's what we use is planned growth principles in our land use plan.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do we have anyone else who? Josh, sorry.
Has your company purchased the property yet?
No, we have not. The closing is set for the middle of August. And so we will be purchasing. That's a pretty standard procedure where we'll work through rezoning and design on the property. And we have earnest money down. That's hard. The gentleman, that's nonrefundable. And so like was mentioned, we're going to be purchasing the property either way in the middle of August. But it's always better if we can get a jump on that. Obviously, development is expensive. And in order to keep the cost of land down, the cost of development down, the cost of homes down, so it's not transferred to the end buyer, if we don't spend all that time holding the land and interest carry, then it makes it easier to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the rezoning?
First, just want to thank you for your time. I represent the seller and just want everyone to know that when I met Mr. and Mrs. Mingo, unfortunately, they're elderly and they're not able to attend this meeting. She's very sharp and has her wits about her. She knew exactly what this property was going to be, what it could be, as far as all the way down to the price. There was nothing that was ever had to be discussed, negotiated. She knew exactly what she wanted from day one. Excuse me. A lot of people talk about blood, sweat, and tears. She lost her husband and her son on this property. The whole purpose of selling this property is for her to buy a new home for her brother and his wife to live together so they can finish their short remaining years on earth. Now, with that being said, to discuss the property and why this is important is over the years, as property values have continued, we continue to lose families and even kids that are going through high school to go to college, come back. We're losing those to other counties. And by creating this community, it will make smaller lots, which means smaller houses, which means it'll be more affordable. Anderson County does not need another 500-plus thousand dollar subdivision around here because no one can afford it. As time has continued with interest rates changing, therefore, closing costs continue to go up. The entire market has shifted where people are looking at houses completely different than they were two years ago. Back two years ago, I never tell anybody about looking at a two-bedroom house. A lot of people are looking at two-bedroom houses because everything is starting to cost so much, the cost of living and et cetera. So smaller lots, smaller houses is what this community does need. I'm not saying tiny homes by any means. And I do really feel that this community could benefit Anderson County as a whole and solve a lot of problems that we have with housing. You can look on Facebook groups and you can continually see people asking, is there any three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes for rent, for sale? And this will help solve a lot of the issues.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you say your name for the record for the ones that don't know?
Yes, my name is Blythe Sanders.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? Okay, we will move to anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the rezoning. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mayor. My name's Bob Davis and I live at 1590 Mountain Road. I've been asked by the citizens of the community to speak in behalf for the community on the concerns that they have for this proposed subdivision. According to the developer, they're wanting to put 120 houses on approximately 35 acres that can be developed on this piece of property. It's a 67-acre piece of property, but most of it is unbuildable. Now, we're not against a subdivision or growth in Anderson County. But we feel that this particular subdivision is going to create more problems for this particular area due to the traffic, the infrastructure, the schools. The Andersonville Elementary School is almost maxed out. The county is going to have to do something with the roads, the infrastructure, and possibly build a new school if you add this many people. Now, in addition to this, there's another 62 acres that's already under development at Brookstone. So you're adding more people in. You know, I'm not against, we're not against the growth. This type of growth won't benefit Anderson County. Now, you've got a lot of problems that this property is going to generate. Far as, like I said, the water runoff is going to end up in Buffalo Creek, Clinch River, potential negative environmental impact. We have circulated a petition requesting the Commission to deny this zoning request. I have 243 signatures on this petition. May I? Those signatures are from people that live in and around the community, that travel Mountain Road or live there or have relatives or family or friends, whatever, in that area. Now, they talk about affordable housing. At one time, the developers offered to meet with the community to see if we could work something out. Nobody from the developer has contacted anybody in the community to see if we could work together to find a solution to this. Now, I'm kind of reluctant to bring one thing up. You have a subdivision out off of Moonview that started out as affordable housing. Basically, same size, excuse me, same-sized houses on same-sized property. Last year alone, Anderson County Sheriff's Department made 70 calls to this subdivision from anything from drugs to burglaries to all kinds of criminal problems. Not to say that it started out that way, but that's what we've got. That's what we don't want in our part of the community. So please consider that as this community evolves, people are going to move in, move out, and then you're going to end up with this. Anybody have any questions? I'd be happy to. Well, thank you for your time. Please don't allow this to happen to our community. Thank you.
Mr. Davis and elected him to speak, could you raise your hand? Thank you.
Hi, I just, Jim Romer, live at 154 Ridgetop Lane in Andersonville. Again, appreciate everybody's time. And I think as I hear all these, you know, perspectives, one thing that, you know, really stuck out with me was the fact that it's not a no-growth option. And we already have, I mean, a process which identified this part of the county a path forward for it to grow, but to remain its rural, you know, setting as opposed to residential. And it's already Ag 2, it's just been brought up. So, you know, I'm an outland owner. I empathize with people. I get to the end of my time and I want to distribute that, you know, to my family. I want to be able to develop it to some degree. But if you look again at Ag 2, which it already is, you can do a lot of development. I mean, the people, the person who owns this property is going to receive that payout, which they deserve. And a couple of things, you know, that you mentioned, the things, the due diligence and all that you do, and you have to do that in the job. But, you know, to sort of throw out almost a scare thing, it could be a mobile home park and be a higher density. The individual development, my understanding, has to go through and get approved anyway. And that's certainly not what developers are interested in doing. So all we're really asking here is let's get the numbers down. That's going to help, you know, mitigate, it's still going to be a real challenge with, you know, the driving. And the other part is I've talked to elementary school teachers and stuff. I mean, they're all our neighbors and, you know, there's not, if you do the math and you assume you're targeting first-time home buyers and younger families, you know, and you have your 1.9 children, you know, you have to build a whole, you know, school. And if you do the math on that, which, I mean, those numbers are readily available, the amount of tax generated from, you know, the property development here doesn't even, you know, touch a new school or schools. And the other thing is, isn't this sort of a, I think the term is like a jump zoning? I mean, my understanding of, as you matured in the development process, if you were going to decide, you know, maybe the time for being agricultural 2, maybe we need to consider going to the residential, that would be something that would be approved in your plan. You said the last one was in 2020. I don't know when the next one is. But, I mean, shouldn't that be the process that guides this? Because I thought when you did that, you sort of went out a little bit further where you already were that zoning. But I understand here, we're actually jumping over some property that is still, you know, agriculture 2, right? So then the next time somebody wants to do it, and, you know, to your point, yeah, we don't want to necessarily the scenario that you painted. But by the same token, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you pass this zoning, and we don't have the final plats and all that stuff, but if they came up and said, you know what? We've had a change of heart. We really would like to build apartments here. My understanding is if it's zoned, you know, for what R1, that that would be allowable, right? So that's a risk that we take as opposed to keeping it where it is, where you can have homes that can be relatively modest and people can have more room and less infrastructure demand. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to make sure didn't get lost in the shuffle here. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Romer.
Now, George, can we have Mr. Edwards speak to the apartments question that was presented? Or if Tim wants to speak on too, I know both of you guys are both on Planning Commission.
Yeah. Multifamily housing is not permitted in R1 zone, single family. You can have.
No apartments would be allowed, correct?
Apartments would not be allowed in R1 zoning. Any other questions?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes.
I do have a question. I was.
If I may. I was wondering, what would be a density that you would accept? I hear this 120 houses on 35 acres. Is there a density that would be acceptable? Anyone?
There is a density established, is there not, in agricultural 2?
Please approach the podium.
We have zoning quotes here. I just read when I was trying to research this on before, but my understanding is that there is a density that is established per acre under the current zoning. And so I would ask that someone share that with us. But if memory serves me correctly, it was on the order of maybe half, you know, you would need twice as much. But we don't need to guess that, we've got the professionals here, so.
Mr. Edwards, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I can address that. The current lot size, minimum lot size requirement is 20,000 square feet for the A2, which is rural residential. And R1 is 10,000 square feet, minimum lot size.
So there would be half the plats.
It could be, again, this is a rezoning and not necessarily a subdivision review. We have not even, as a planning commission, have not even had an opportunity to look at any subdivision plat. So it's premature for me to say anything about that. But that's the density is 20,000 lot size versus 10,000 square foot lot size, minimum.
I have a copy here of A2 and R1. There are 10 uses permitted on an A2 and they're listed. There's only two uses permitted on an R1. R1 can only have a detached, single-family dwelling, number two daycare homes. There are some special exemptions in both of these, but I think they have to get permission. I have this, we can make a copy during the break for any Commissioner that wants that. But we do have the paper here. Thank you.
If it remains the same, excuse me, the duplexes.
Yes, sir.
Would be 53 duplexes, was that?
Yes, it would be 53 buildings with obviously two units per building. So that's how I arrived at that, 126.
You're talking 106?
126 units in 53 buildings. Yes, sir.
In 53 buildings. So 120 homes or 126 the other way? And you're saying there is going to be development one way or the other?
Yeah. You know, one of the things, and again, I applaud the people of Anderson County for being here and speaking their mind. They're a tight-knit community and I've gotten to experience a lot of that and it's not a bad thing. I'm glad if I lived here, I'd want to do the same. And I think there's a lot of people that would love to live in that community and be a part of that. And so we wanna develop this to create homes. We know that there's a large need for that here from everything that's been said from the Planning Commission as well as this Commission. And so the biggest difference between the R1 and the A2, in my mind, is it is a twice the size lot. So you're about two per acre. So if you took that density out, you end up, you know, about 126, 128 units that would be allowed. If you're in the R1, it's a smaller lot, but obviously those have to have setbacks with a duplex unit. There's no setback between the units, so you do save some space. And so my goal in that revision of the design was a couple of things, just to address some of the things that were said. It was, first, I understand the rural setting. I grew up in Grundy County. There wasn't a house within five miles of mine. It's just woods. And I know that I liked that, and I understand everyone else does too. And so I pulled everything in, 35 feet on both sides. We're not gonna clear, we're not gonna grade. I know there, you know, there was something mentioned about some water runoff. There's a lady that's a neighbor next door that has a current ditch that runs along the edge of the property. We've met with her and agreed, we don't wanna do anything to impede that, touch it, change it. But as well, leaving as much of that as we can, leaving the entire back covered in trees. And so as well, then the front, leaving 50 feet at least off the road before anything starts, and the homes would be set back considerably further than that. So the goal is to screen that. And the other thing was to pull it 100 feet off of the gentleman that lives at 1566 Mountain Road. His home sits probably 20 feet higher in elevation. And so we didn't wanna get near his property line and grading, nor did we wanna hurt any of his trees getting into the roots. Even if you're not on them, you can kill them. And so pulling everything back where nothing would be touched within 100 feet of that, leaving the trees that surround his home and keeping that rural. And also having an HOA that, obviously, any neighborhood, it's good to have that to maintain restrictions on what can be done, changing the outside of the homes, the look of them, anything like that. And so this would have that. And it would also restrict anything within any of those buffer zones. So clearing, building, fencing, nothing can go there. And that would be written into the CCNRs of the HOA bylaws that would be submitted to the Planning Commission in the event that we got through this and submitted something for, either way, those would be included just to protect the look of the community, keep it maintained the way it needs to be.
So if the request is approved, there'd be 120 homes. If it's not approved, then you'd have 126 residences, basically?
Well, what I would say, yes. I'm not an engineer, so my drawing, I think I might have said in my email, please be kind, because I do those. But after engineering, I know we'd end up at that or less. In order to meet all the subdivision regulations, we have to go by the rules with that. And so whatever that would allow within that, but it would be 120 or about there or less, depending on what we needed for stormwater right-of-way and all of that.
So the school issue wouldn't be affected either way? I mean, it would be affected both ways?
It could. I think that, you know, these homes, in order to be affordable, I don't, you know, it's hard to even say what that word is anymore. It's crazy. I moved to Knoxville in 2008, and my home was $94,000. I don't think you can buy anything for that anymore. So keeping these homes where they're in an affordable range in the high 200s and low 300s, which again, saying that's affordable is questionable, but that seems to be the way the market is going. Compared to the neighborhoods nearby, that is considerably more affordable than some of those. Some of those will have people with children, I'm sure, and some will not. Usually, in other neighborhoods that I've built, it's usually probably about 30%. Depending on the area, this area, I also expect you're gonna have people who wanna benefit from the lake and people who move here that wanna get out of the city. So it's hard to project, but it wouldn't change it much either way as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?